A public hearing to consider an application to expand an existing special use and for several variations from the bulk permitted encroachment, parking, and landscape requirements to allow a two-story classroom addition to an existing elementary school and associated parking lot and playground improvements in the R1A single-family zoning district. The petitioner is Riverside School District, D-96. We're all still here? All in favor?
Let's do a motion in a second.
Going to have a motion to reopen?
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public notice was published in the Landmark on February 5th and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Anybody who plans on providing testimony, I'll swear you in, so if you're able to stand, please stand and raise your right hand.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Awesome, thank you. So first Director App will provide a summary and then D-96 will do their presentation and we can ask questions and then public comment and then we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. So D-96 is before you for an expansion to their existing special use as well as several variations. They are zoned R1A, single-family, and in the R1A district, elementary schools, high schools, et cetera, are considered special uses. Prior to the adoption of the current code back in December of 2005, elementary schools and high schools were classified as permitted uses in the R1 zoning district. The transition rules that are in our current ordinance state that when a lot is used for a purpose that was classified as a permitted use prior to the effective date hereof and such use is classified as a special use by the zoning ordinance, such use is hereby deemed a lawful special use for the purpose of this zoning ordinance. Any addition, enlargement, or expansion of such use shall conform to the requirements for special uses of this zoning ordinance. So therefore, since they are planning to put an addition onto this and it's going to expand the intensity of the use, they do require a special use review and approval. So they are before you for that. Additionally, as part of this project, this addition is going to be located on the north side of the building and built over part of the existing parking lot. They have also purchased the property at 443 Loudon and a portion of the addition will also be located on that lot. This addition is two stories with an 8,000-square-foot footprint. It will match the existing school utilizing brick and matching the roofline. The height of the addition will be 30 feet, which is about a foot and a half shorter than the height of the existing building and meets the maximum building height for the zoning district. The addition is going to contain a new multipurpose room, new library media center, fifth-grade classrooms, and three early learner classrooms with bathrooms. This project is also going to include building a new parking lot and new playground areas. The existing parking lot will be removed, reconfigured, and expanded to the east onto that 443 Loudon property. The proposed addition and associated parking lot and playground improvements do not meet the bulk requirements for the R1A zoning district and require several variations, which are outlined further on in this report. They'll, I'm sure, talk about kind of the traffic movements and everything, but the parking lot is going to increase to 43 parking spaces and it will have two curb cuts from Loudon as well as access that comes along the west side of the building from Nuttall, South Coat, on the west side of the building. Some existing conditions that they have include that the property is a through lot, which means it has frontage both on South Coat and on Loudon. Therefore, the property has two required street yards. The required street yard from Loudon is approximately 194 feet and therefore any addition onto the rear of the school would encroach into this required rear yard, as if it were an addition onto the front of the school and therefore would require a variation. The existing school also encroaches into the required side yard from the west property line. This is primarily due to the purchase of that adjacent property on Repton, which increased the frontage of the property and therefore increased the required side yard setbacks. The setbacks for the existing building are 33.08 feet from the west property line and 61.23 feet from the east property line. The required setback is 39.98 feet. Additionally, the existing parking lots are set back less than two feet from the west property line. There is a 10-foot setback requirement. The existing building currently does not exceed 30 percent building coverage. However, before the purchase of the adjacent properties, it did exceed that maximum 30 percent of lot coverage. The existing impervious surfaces exceed the maximum 50 percent impervious coverage. The existing building does not exceed the maximum building height of 32 feet, which I mentioned earlier. The existing drive from South Coat is only 16 feet wide. The minimum required width is 18 feet for a one-way drive aisle. The current parking lot also does not provide for the required parking lot landscaping, perimeter, or interior. With the addition, we have some variation requirements that need to happen in order for them to do this. The proposed addition, as I said, will encroach into the street yard, but it'll also encroach into the required side yard setbacks. So from the north property line, the required setback is 194 feet. This will be, I didn't have that on there, I think it's 123.78 feet from the north property line. As I said before, the minimum setback is 39.69. From the west property line, it will be 33.21 feet from the east property line, so it won't be any closer than the existing building is on that side. And then on the east side, it will encroach slightly as well. I think it's less than a foot, but it does still encroach. So, actually, no. Yes. So it's 39.69 feet from the west property line and 33.21 from the east property line. So it's the east property line that has the 33.21 setback. The 39.69 is from the west property line. The current setback is about 36, did I say before? I'm forgetting now, I'm sorry. 33.08. So it won't be any closer, it'll actually be a little further away than the further south corner is from that west property line. Additionally, the associated parking lot and playground improvements require some variations. The building coverage is going to be exceeded. The maximum is 30 and they will be coming in at 30.3 percent of the lot area. Additionally, for impervious surface, between the addition and the parking lot and some of the improvements, they are going over the 50 percent. In their plans, they say that their impervious surface coverage will be 62.1 percent. Upon further discussion with our village engineer regarding permeable surfaces being used, which we discussed at the January meeting, they did incorporate more permeable materials, utilizing permeable pavers in the parking lot as well as the walkway, and then a permeable concrete hard surface for kind of the basketball court play area. According to MWRD, they're not considered impervious surfaces, the permeable pavers and the permeable concrete, and therefore it would not count towards the impervious surface coverage. So in the past, when somebody comes in for a permeable paver driveway, that permeable paver driveway does not count towards their total impervious surface coverage. So therefore, if we look at the numbers that they had proposed, if we zero out the permeable paver areas and the permeable concrete areas, that brings their percentage down to 52 percent. So that would be the impervious coverage proposed based on how we calculate impervious surfaces. That is still over the maximum of 50 percent in the R1A district.
52 percent or 62 percent?
52 percent.
Using the village's calculations.
So additionally, the dumpster enclosure does require a variation. Our code requires that refuse containers not be built in the street yard. Because this is a through lot, even though it is set about 80 feet back from the Loudon property line, it is still technically in the required street yard and therefore does require a variance. It will also be set back six feet from the west property line and it will be a masonry enclosure with a solid wood gate that faces to the east. The parking lot requires several variations, including required off-street parking. The code requires two parking spaces per classroom, which would require 46 off-street parking spaces for this school. The proposed parking lot will not contain that required number. They are proposing 43 off-street parking spaces. The current parking lot contains 36 parking spaces, so the new lot will be increasing the parking onsite by seven. They also require a variation from our dimensions and spaces, dimension of spaces and aisles in our parking code, which requires one-way traffic aisles for non-residential parking lots to be a minimum of 18 feet wide. The existing drive aisle from Nuttall is only 16 feet wide and has existing parking on the west side. This area will be reconfigured into a one-way drive aisle with angled parking and a sidewalk adjacent to the building, however, the drive will remain only 16 feet wide. It will widen to approximately 17.4 feet at the north end where it connects to the new parking lot. And inside the new parking lot area on the north side, all of those drive aisles are the required 18-foot width. Additionally, they require some variations from our parking lot landscaping requirements. Our landscaping ordinance requires a 10-foot perimeter landscape area around parking lots and requires shrubs to be planted at a 1 for every three feet of landscape area length ratio. The existing parking lot's only two feet from the west property line. The new parking lot will continue to be set back only two feet from the property line and will be set back only three feet from the east property line at its closest point. On the west side, the setback increase, or sorry, on the east side, the setback increases closer to the addition and will require, contain the required landscaping, however, on the west side, it is only two feet and so there's no way for them to provide that landscaping. They are proposing to replace the existing chain-link fence with a four-foot opaque cedar fence to screen the parking lot from the neighboring property. They also require a variation from the interior parking lot landscaping. This is the one that requires parking lot islands, landscaped islands within the parking lot. It requires parking lots containing 20 or more parking spaces to provide interior parking lot islands at a rate of 1 for every five parking spaces and that the islands must be a minimum of 144 square feet in area and a minimum of eight feet wide. It also requires each island to be planted with one shade tree. The code then would require nine parking islands, each containing one tree. The proposed parking lot will only contain five landscape islands. Some have neither the required width of eight feet nor the required size of 144 square feet. The five landscape islands contain a total of six shade trees. The total island area required is 1,296 square feet and the proposed area for the provided landscape islands is 1,559 square feet. So they meet the total, but not necessarily the specific number of islands in that regard and they're not providing the required number of trees. You have in your staff report the standards for special uses as well as the standards for variations for you to reference as you go through the discussion. All of the standards do need to be met in order to recommend a special use or the variation. I provided copies of the plans. D-96 and their consultants are here to kind of walk you through the project as well and some of the existing conditions and proposed conditions and I'm here to answer any questions that you have as well. Oh, I should also mention that I do have some conditions in the staff report that I would recommend that you add to your recommendation if you are going to recommend approval. Those do include that the building must comply with our radio amplification in certain buildings to provide adequate radio coverage for our public safety agencies within the building and the addition. It also includes yield signs being installed at the intersections of Repton and South Coat with Nuttall as recommended by our traffic engineer. It does require approval of the engineering plans by the village engineer and MWRD and approval of the parkway tree locations by the village forester.
Is it still case that you do not receive any comments from residents?
No.
To the office?
No.
Okay. And this building is not a landmark building, so preservation did not have to be reviewed?
Correct.
Okay. D-96, who's?
Good evening. I want to introduce myself. My name is Todd Girmann. I'm principal of Ames Elementary School and Riverside School District 96 and I want to begin by saying thank you to the Riverside Zoning and Planning Board for meeting with us this evening. This process to remodel and add additions to our schools in Riverside School District 96 began with our Board of Education's strategic plan that was developed during the 2015-2016 school year. We set out with the ultimate goal of reconfiguring our existing spaces in our elementary buildings to optimize student learning, provide secure front entrances at all of our buildings, and ensure student safety by separating play and parking in all of our buildings. Under the guidance of our demographic and architect team, in April of 2017, we formed the District 96 Facility Advisory Committee to provide focused goals that would address the needs of our buildings and provide for optimal learning experience for all of our students in District 96. We felt it necessary to take a district-wide approach to make certain our needs are being addressed in all of our elementary buildings, which we do have four in Riverside. We worked with our architect team, engineering team, district leadership team, District 96 staff members, parents, and students to develop a very thoughtful and deliberate plan that addressed the needs of our students. More specifically, I know there's a slide two on here, it gives some key points. We looked, we wanted to, oh, one more back, I'm sorry.
This one?
Thank you, yes. Secured front entrance, account for all existing itinerant in student support areas, appropriate number of classrooms, including possible full-day kindergarten, that's one of our board goals, a place to eat and conduct large group projects, a multipurpose room, leverage new property acquisitions, alleviate overcrowding across all schools, create multi-section options for Blythe Park Elementary School, which is currently a one-section school, which means they have one classroom per grade level. We're looking to hopefully go with two classrooms per grade level to offset some of the overcrowding, allow for relocation of early learners program from Blythe Park to Ames Elementary School, and separate planned parking, and finally renovation and reconfiguration of the library media centers. It should also be noted that we have experienced an increase in enrollment at District 96 of 50 percent since 2001. So if we look at slide three, this is our enrollment increase since 2001. This does not include our early learners, which fluctuate from year to year. Right now, if we looked at how many early learners we have, it's approximately 70 students on top of that, so we're continuing on that upward trend. The district is now at capacity and we have been looking at a location where we can alleviate this potential overcrowding in all of our elementary buildings. Ames is the ideal location due to the acquisition of the two properties adjacent to either side of our building. For more details, I'm going to now introduce our project architect, Mr. Ryan Kelly from DLA.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Introduce myself. My name's Ryan Kelly. I'm with DLA Architects. We're the architects of record for Riverside School District 96. And I want to start by, how do we change to the next slide? There we go. So I wanted to start by giving you a little bit of history about Ames Elementary, how it's expanded over the years. The original building was built in 1924, which is that central volume there in the middle. In 1929, the gymnasium was built to the north, which you'll see in that diagram up at the top. And then in 1968, the two classroom additions were built to the east and west. In the diagram to the top of the page there, you'll see the heavy dash line, which shows the existing property line. That has stayed the same over its generations and is now the existing property line before the acquisition of the two properties at Loudon and Repton. So I want to take a moment to walk you through the variations. I know you've read through the findings of fact, one by one, and while eight variations is a lot, what we hope to represent here and illustrate is that they're very interconnected and that the hardships are also very interconnected. So if you look at the first variation that we're requesting, this is a variation to encroach on the side yards and the street yard, the east and west side yards. We are encroaching by about six feet on each side. The addition that we're proposing is no closer to the west property line than the existing building. On the east side, we are encroaching again about six feet and really the reason there and the hardship that was developed was finding a way to circulate through the site, which goes back to looking at overcrowding, looking at how we can bring drop-off onto site for early learning and really find a way to maximize the space in the parking lot. If we look at the street yard on Loudon, the interesting thing about this site, it is a through lot, as Sonia mentioned, so we have two street yards that we are dealing with, one on Repton, or I'm sorry, on South Coat, and then also on Loudon. We did look at an addition on the Repton property, which really would impact the historical facade of the main entry, so Loudon obviously made the most sense to do that addition. Any addition into Loudon or toward Loudon would be an encroachment on that street yard. So really, you know, looking at that hardship is, at the beginning, was a challenge to overcome. If we move on to variation number three, I'm sorry, number two, the bulk requirement seems like something that would be easily complied with. 30 percent is the threshold for the R1A district. We're currently at 30.3 percent, which seems fairly close, but what that equates to is about 700 square feet in building footprint, which is about one classroom. And if we look at two stories, that's about 1,400 square feet in two classrooms. Knowing that the goals of the district were really to alleviate overcrowding at many schools, that really made complying with that 30 percent not meet the program requirements of the district as well as the school. If we look at the impervious surfaces, we took some information from our last meeting and really looked at different ways we could incorporate permeable surfaces into that. We added permeable pavers throughout the entire playground area, which added about a percent for us. We added some additional green space in the playground area, which is a little over 3 percent. The permeable concrete, we were going to add in the basketball area, was about a percent. And then the wood chips got us to a little over 3 percent, it looks like. And then about a little over percent in permeable pavers in the parking lot. What we weren't aware of was the MDWRD view on permeable pavers. Originally, we thought we got to about 62 percent from the existing 80.5 percent, which we thought was a significant increase. We've now learned tonight that 52 percent is much better than that, so we're very close to that threshold.
Can you tell us what the shavings are there?
Sure.
Can't read anything.
So we looked at...
Laser.
That's right. All right, so that right there and that right there.
It might not work on that screen.
The tan are the permeable pavers. Those would be, yep, thank you, there and there. That would be in the parking lot area. Jason will talk about that more in just a minute, over the gravel infiltration pit. And then the permeable pavers throughout the playground area to the east of the building. We added in the dark green, a little over 5,000 square feet of turf, green space. And then the basketball court went from asphalt to a permeable concrete. Further to the south, we've got wood chips playground area. So then we initially were looking at a soft surface, either turf or poured rubber, but wood chips gave us much more permeability and was, you know, a better option.
So how much of the parking lot is pavers?
So right under the parking lot there, we've got roughly probably about 5,000 square feet of permeable pavers over the gravel infiltration pit. So, and we looked at those, this is a good segue into one slide we'd like to talk about. We looked at permeable pavers elsewhere within the parking lot and there's some specific design and drainage reasons that we didn't do that. Maybe Jason, can you talk about that for a minute?
For the record, Jason Green, WT Group, 2675 Prattob Avenue, Hoffman Estates.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This is a little bit cleaner version, just a little bit dummy down for clarity. We just color-coded a few of the main changes that we made from the feedback that we got from the board last time. In light green, I should point out that we do show the old Repton house that was demolished recently on the right side, so you can see it's half-green, half-blue. Does it work? Top of it does. Oh, it doesn't show on the screen though. Hey. There you go. So the detached garage is shown just north of the house, you can see in green. So the reason for the different colors is just to differentiate a few of the improvements that we've tried to make. So first of all, the green indicates areas that were impervious, fully impervious, and now we're proposing to make those pervious, 100 percent pervious. So you could see where the old shed was, yeah, just pointed the detached garage. So that's grass area. The wood chip paver area, or the wood chip playground area, is partly where the house was. The dark blue hatch that you see is where the permeable concrete will be, the basketball court. So the back third of the house roughly was in that area. There was grass around it, but we're actually making some improvements there. And then pavers are shown in light blue. So we, just for clarity, we just kept all the pavers the same, whether they're in the parking lot or the little walkways to and from the playground area. And really, we tried to maximize what we could do to make as much permeable as possible and we also tried to make it as practical as possible in that, you'll see later on, that we made sure that for drainage purposes, to drain away from the neighbors into the center of the property. So for example, in the parking lot, we pitched everything away from the neighbor properties to a low point that is where the blue hatch is. The purpose was get the water away from the neighbors, make sure that it's draining away from them in towards the property and then into a low area where it can sit and infiltrate properly through the pavers. So we've tried, we've kept that in mind and tried to make sure it works, not only proposing something, just to propose it, we're thinking it through and trying to make sure that it's doing the most good.
The driving area in the parking lot is not permeable.
So the driving area, the drive lanes that you see in white are asphalt pavement right now.
And why not make them pervious?
So because of the slopes, they won't, we won't get as much bang for the buck by doing that because water will tend to skip over them. The pavers need somewhat of a level surface to promote infiltration. You'll get some water to flow into them, but it'll be diminishing returns on those sloped areas. So that was the purpose of focusing in that area.
So we're going to move along here. Are there any other questions on the pervious building coverage?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment, okay. So variation number three is to place the new trash enclosure in the street yard. The existing trash enclosure is really at the angled, or the pivot of the lot, I'll call it, to the west. That's not going to work. So to the west, right at the pivot of the lot, right by the existing school, the current dumpster does not have an enclosure and looking for a safe place for not only garbage truck circulation, but also away from the main entrance of the addition, which is the east. We chose to place it, again, away from Loudon Street, but close enough so circulation could happen and pickup could happen. We did work with Flood Brothers to find the size of their truck. We ran circulation diagrams and the axles do work. And again, it seems like a safe place away from the main entrance. So we're asking for a variation for that. We go through. So number four, this is a variation to not provide the parking lot setbacks. The, I think the intent of... We did work with Flood Brothers to find the size of their truck. We ran circulation diagrams, and the axles do work. And again, it seems like a safe place away from the main entrance. So we're asking for a variation for that. We go through. So number four, this is a variation to not provide the parking lot setbacks. The, I think the intent of this was to provide buffer from the neighboring residential properties. Because of the reduced perimeter setback, particularly on the west side, but also in trying to walk that balance and provide as many parking spots as safely possible, we are not having the available space to provide that on the east side as well. So what we are doing is we are providing a fence along the west property line. There is an existing fence that the neighbor has, as well as some shade trees, and so we are continuing that fence line to the end of the parking lot. On the east, we will be providing additional shade trees, as well as shrubbery.
On the east, is there a fence?
I'm sorry.
On the east, is there a fence?
East, there is not a fence. There is an existing hedge of arborvitae's that offers quite a bit of shade, or separation. We will be providing new shrubbery, as well as shade trees along the east. One thing, I'll step back here for a minute. Impacted parking spots, would we provide that? That setback would be about twenty-four spots. So again, trying to illustrate the balance between providing enough parking, trying to meet the village ordinance, provide good circulation, that those ten-foot setbacks would significantly impact the number of parking spots that we'd be able to provide. Fifth variance that we're requesting is a variation for parking lot landscape barrier along the west. This is obviously very tied to the previous one. Again, I think the intent here is to create a barrier between residential neighbors. What you'll see there on the left is a overview of the existing parking lot. On the west, we are proposing to keep that same existing condition, and that same distance from the property line, it's a little bit less than a foot. Again, along the west, there is that neighbor's fence. We'll be continuing that fence line to the end of the parking lot, offering that buffer and that protection from headlights. And as you can see, as from the landscape plan on the right, we'll be providing those shade trees to offer additional buffer between that residence. On the east there, there's that existing hedge, as I mentioned, of arborvitae's that is on the neighbor's property. We will be providing additional shrubbery, as well as a few shade trees there, for some Sixth variation that we're requesting is for the size and number of required parking lot islands. What you'll see here in the numbered and light green are the parking lot islands that we are providing. This really became a function of, one, the number of parking spaces that we were trying to provide, the circulation that was required through the lot, around the school and through the lot, which really made angled parking the most efficient solution. In doing that, creating islands and circulation made it a little bit more challenging. So what we are doing is providing about fifteen hundred square feet of total landscape islands. The required number of islands is nine. At a hundred and forty-four square feet per island, that gives you about twelve hundred and ninety-six, I think, square feet required. So we're proposing to exceed that square footage, but in a different arrangement and allocation. As you can see, adding one island every five spots would impact the number of parking spaces that we're able to provide, so that was a consideration, kind of a hardship that we had to balance. Number seven, the seventh variation we're requesting is for reduced aisleway. We are going to repave and resurface the existing sixteen-foot drive aisle along the west side of the school. The proposal here and the idea is to transition from that existing condition of sixteen feet to a seventeen-foot wide drive aisle along the new addition, and then transition to the required eighteen-foot drive aisles to the north of the addition. So we met with Fire Chief Buckley on site. We had some discussions with him about access off of Repton, as well as off of Loudon. He was satisfied with the configuration that we had proposed, and we did some turning radius studies, and all of those worked out for the existing truck they have, and also future truck that they plan on purchasing.
Since you're repaving, why not go to eighteen?
Well, with the existing building is already encroaching on the western setback. There's parking existing there. We want to reuse and capture that parking, so it's a balance, again, of trying to comply with the parking lot ordinance, which came close, but not quite, and I'll get into that in a minute, but really, that parking becomes pretty valuable. So that was the reason for making that decision. So the proposal is, again, to transition to drive aisles that are in compliance, and because it is a one-way, we felt that, and with the fire chief's input, we felt that it was a safe way to transition to, you know, complying with the code.
That wasn't addressed in here, the parking lot, parking spaces.
Did the fire chief have any issues with sixteen-foot wide, or?
No, he didn't.
Not on the new truck at all?
No, actually, the turning studies that we did were with the new truck. And he said he had no issue getting through there.
I think one of the inputs on that was that as it comes around the curve, it's tight. So there was talk about changing the curve that's on that island.
We did talk about that, doing a rollover curb on that island as opposed to a standard curb, and he said that would help. He said that they would be able to navigate it, but that would be an added help. The direct access off of Loudon, he said, would be probably their primary access point, as well as the service drive to the east of the existing building, which is where the Siamese connection is. So that's, he said that's primarily where they would pull up. The eighth and final variation that we're requesting is a variation for the number of parking spaces. Two per classroom is the ordinance code. We were complying with that. We had the area shaded in red. We have now dedicated to a fire lane. After meeting with Chief Buckley, he indicated that that would be a nice-to-have, but it wouldn't be necessarily a requirement, and it seemed like three parking spaces there made sense. There would be, we were proposing parking there when drop-off wasn't happening, so it wouldn't be parking all the time, so we made that concession, and we thought that was a good thing to do and made that lane safer and more accessible for the fire truck. So for that reason, we're only providing forty-three spaces. The existing has thirty-six spaces striped, so we're increasing that by seven, and also, you know, looking to alleviate congestion around the neighboring streets by bringing more cars onto the lot. With that, I will turn it over to Jason.
I'm not gonna read the whole letter to you, but I believe you all have copies of this MWRD letter in your packets. There's a little blow-up there of kind of a highlight that I wanted to discuss this evening. Basically, we'll need a permit from their office, and that's in addition to the village engineer, the state, we have to get a permit from the regional office of education, and also IEPA. So we're being scrutinized, we're, there's nothing I would do, underhanded to sign and seal plans anyway. So everybody's overlooking this and making sure that we're following the code. The other, the second part that's highlighted is that stormwater detention is not required. Stormwater detention, being a detention basin, an open pond, we do have something else called volume control, which is those gravel pits that are underneath two of the surfaces. So that is, it's not just a detention basin. That helps to hold the water and temporarily hold it and release it slowly, but it also helps to clean up the water, because if the water's sitting in that gravel, as it flows through the gravel pieces, it gets cleaned. So it does two purposes beneath those surfaces. Second letter is, the third letter from the village engineer, acknowledging four things. Number one, acknowledging that the underground storage is indicated, and that's the two gravel pits, and then he expands on that to cover that there's two pits, one at the north, underneath the parking lot, one at the southeast, under the wood chip playground. And then finally, in orange, he indicates that we'll be directing water away from the neighbors, so that we're not adding to the flooding condition. And as you'll see in a minute with the other exhibit, you'll see that we've actually improved those conditions. Third thing I'd like to show you is the Illinois Drainage Law excerpt, highlighted in yellow. There's basically two rules that really govern the whole intent of the Illinois Drainage Law, and that is, if you're a high property, you have the right to drain to a lower property next door, but you don't have the right to hinder that lower property by increasing the flow rate, the velocity, or otherwise damaging the lower property adjacent to you. The other highlighted item up there is that the lower property cannot deny drainage from the higher property, and those are the rules of the, I think you'll see that we're meeting those, or exceeding those requirements. This is a little bit, well, a lot of text, so I want to kind of walk through it with the exhibit in front of you. So basically, it just summarizes how the MWRD will be looking at the permeable pavers in the parking lot with the gravel beneath, the wood chips with the gravel beneath, and both of those are located in, towards the center of the property, so that storm sewers and curves can be constructed around the perimeter. The paved drives can pitch inward. All the pipes from the storm sewer route into the gravel pit, and then it's discharged through a small orifice or restrictor plate that lets it slowly drain back to the street. Likewise, with the wood chip playground, with the curb on that side, captures the water, stops it from running off, directs it into storm sewers, which are directed into the gravel pit beneath the wood chips, and slowly released back to Repton, the storm sewer This is the exhibit that we looked at earlier, showing the three main ways that we've reduced impervious. This exhibit shows the two gravel pits, basically just under 2,000 cubic feet in each of those pits that we're able to hold and store. And then the result of reducing the impervious, the result of reducing the impervious and providing those underground storage vaults, is sixteen percent reduction to the southwest to not all. That's a sixteen percent reduction in the peak flow rate coming from that area. At the southeast, it's a ninety percent reduction to South Coat, and at the northwest to Loudon. It is, oh, it's fifty-nine to South Coat and ninety percent to Loudon. And then another important thing I want to point out is, we've actually made a hundred percent reduction to the east, where you see that white box, hundred percent reduction to the backyards. There's a significant drainage concern in that area right now. A lot of neighbors have flooding constantly in that area, very deep amount of water. As the site is currently, that whole side of the yard from the school, just she drains towards that direction, towards the east, and contributes to that flooding. So by placing the curb and the drains, we're actually reducing all the flow from the school site that goes off and contributes to that flooding concern. In addition, we're providing seven drains along the low side of that curb on our north and our east property lines, in order to help alleviate some of that water that ponds on the neighboring properties, gives it a spot to drain to, and we've routed that through the property down to Red Lake, in order to improve the off-site drainage. We're not grading on the neighbor's property, but we're providing seven drains where we can, on our property, intentionally lowering them, so that it gives a spot for that water to drain to. And with that, I'd like to pass it, was there questions on any other stormwater?
I had just one question. You mentioned there was curving by the wood chip play area. Is there curving all along that side? It's the basketball court and...
Yes, the curb, point here maybe, CD. The curb starts at the, at this corner, and it extends all the way down here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other for traffic?
The drainage on the east, on the west side rather, all along that west property line. Is the existing site higher than the adjacent residential areas?
They're pretty close in that area. They're pretty close in that area. There's existing small wall.
Right.
Small retaining walls, a concrete wall to just matching that grade.
And so, Ames is higher than the adjacent?
The school itself is higher. The grade of the park in there is significantly lower than the buildings, so it's pretty close to what the backwaters are.
Okay, but all of that, then, is gonna drain into the site?
Yes, and there's a curb here as well, around, that follows. It's, like we said, there's the rolled curb, but it's still a six-inch tall curb, it just has a round curve to it. This is all more of a standard square curving, to make sure that nothing goes off of there.
So I think one of the important things to keep in mind is, you can't really change the elevation as you leave the property line, right? You have to be the same elevation as what's existing. So that new curb is basically at the elevation on the east side of what your grass is, so we are essentially cutting and lowering the property within, so it invites the water to flow into this area.
One clarification, that's true, true here. We do have a slight retaining wall here to elevate that, to make sure that curb is elevated enough to make that water flow back in towards the site, instead of letting it run off.
Okay.
So that's along this edge.
Got it, okay. But that's not gonna impact the neighbor property at all?
No, no. I mean, the intention, that's where we placed the drains on the low side of that side, on the east side of that wall, to make sure that we're accepting, readily accepting all the runoff remaining from the neighbor.
So the drains are on the neighbor's side of the curb?
Correct, on the school property, on the neighbor's side of the curb.
And there's about six feet between the fence, the curb and fence in the property line?
Which is actually more than the house, the neighboring house is from the property line. Our curb is further from the property line than the neighbor's house is from the property line. And drainage, traffic?
So we have a cap at fifty percent for impervious surface. We're looking at fifty point two. How does stormwater storage work? Or, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would you argue that it helps compensate for pervious, impervious surface?
Yes, so obviously, the main intent of reducing impervious is to reduce mainly the runoff that you get that runs off of the site. The more hard scape you put down, the more water's gonna run off and has to go somewhere. So by providing the 4,000 cubic feet of underground storage, slowly releasing it, that intent meets, you know, meets the same intent, so it's true. And that's really how we were able to reduce those flow rates as much as we were.
And are you exceeding the MWRD's requirements?
We are. The MWRD's requirements are to provide roughly maybe 2,000 cubic feet of storage in the gravel, so we've roughly doubled their requirement. So we've roughly doubled their requirements on that upfront. And the pavers, especially with the results from the village engineer, were exceeding, exceeding the MWRD's requirements for, because that'll just reduce those volumes as well.
No, I didn't follow you with that. The, what requirement of the MWRD are you exceeding there?
So there's two. There's the volume, you get that. The other part is because they look at, we were figuring all our calculations on 75% imperviousness for those pavers, but it's actually being looked at as zero. So they're looking at those paper areas as if they were purely grass. Whereas we were looking at them as if they were more of a gravel, something that was not quite hardscape but not quite grass. So there's, we're exceeding it against that too.
Okay. So the map in our packet that has pervious and impervious calculations is completely outdated. It's...
It's, it's actually, the numbers will be better than what you see in the packet.
Okay. Because in those calculations, you called the impervious .7570.
Yes, right.
It's got it.
But it also had building lot coverage for the Repton House, so...
Those are the existing numbers.
Right.
And then there's another one that shows their proposed numbers.
For comparison, there was two exhibits.
My [inaudible].
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Disney-Hockey. I'm Sam Schwartz, and we performed the traffic circulation and access study for the master plan at Ames Elementary. Here, we just show an aerial map of the area roadways so that I can provide a discussion of the observations that we performed at the site. We were out at the school for three separate observations to provide a foundation for our assessment of traffic circulation and safety in this area. And Ames Elementary School operates with a very specific traffic safety plan. They have this plan posted on their website, and it entails a one-way segment of South Coat Road in the immediate front of the school between Repton and Nuttall, and takes advantage of that one-way directionality by placing cones in the south lane to reinforce that one-way traffic flow. That's the eastbound lane, so only the westbound lane remains, which is curbside to the school. And parents will pull up in that lane to perform pickup and drop-off in the morning and at the end of the school day at dismissal. And also utilize that space when shifting from the AM kindergarten to the PM kindergarten period. The front of the school has three cones marking the three stations at which parents are to perform pickup and drop-off. And once those pickup or drop-off activities are completed, depending on the time of day, those three parents clear, the next three move up, and move in a single file line in that space. We also observed that parents will perform pickup and drop-off on area streets, including Repton to the northeast and Loudon to the northwest. And many parents also will park in legal parking spaces within the neighborhood, walk their students to the front door and back at the end of the day. The critical period for traffic at schools is typically at dismissal because all of the parents will arrive and stage simultaneously until the bell rings and the students release. So that's when we have the highest simultaneous demand of vehicles at a school. During our observations, we observed up to 98 parent vehicles that were present in the pickup-drop-off lane and in the neighborhood parking on neighborhood streets to complete pickup activities at the end of the school day. We noted that after the 2:55 dismissal bell, the traffic was clear from the area within 15 to 20 minutes, which is not a very long period of time, but based on my experience working at schools in the metro area, I'm more accustomed to seeing seven to 10 minutes. And that told us that there were some opportunities to increase the efficiency of the pickup-drop-off in this area, and that was one of the main focuses of our evaluation for this project. So I apologize for the size. We do maybe have a board we could pull out that I can, thank you, Jason. But while we're getting that, I'll begin summarizing the recommendations that we identified to achieve that increased efficiency and safety in pickup-drop-off. The first being the extension of the length of the sidewalk that allows for pickup and drop-off to happen so that more than three parent vehicles could pick up and drop-off at a single time, therefore achieving increased efficiency during that time period. We also recommend that the school take advantage of that one-way segment of South Coat Road by moving the orange cones from that south lane to bookend the pickup-drop-off lane, basically defining the area that pickup and drop-off is to happen and allowing that segment of South Coat to operate like one half of a downtown district street that has parallel parking on one side, so vehicles can move into and out of those curbside spaces without waiting for the vehicle that's in the front of the line to clear through, increasing the rate of turnover for pickup-drop-off. Thank you, Ryan. To help parents move into those spaces when a space is cleared, we recommend a traffic control individual stationed at South Coat and Repton. Since there are three different approaches that merge to move into that pickup-drop-off lane to direct traffic so it's moving through efficiently. And finally, we recommend some changes to the crosswalks in the area. We prefer to see shorter crosswalk distances because the shorter amount of time that a pedestrian is crossing the street, the shorter they are exposed to a potential conflict with a vehicle. And on the other side of that same coin, the shorter the amount of time the vehicle's waiting for the pedestrian to cross so they can pass through sooner. So we recommend that the existing crosswalks at the west end of South Coat at the intersection with Nuttall be relocated to the east side of that intersection so that shorter crossing distances can be achieved. Crossing guards would still be in place at that location and at the crosswalk at Repton and South Coat so that students are stewarded across the street in a safe manner. And finally, as Sonya mentioned earlier, based on discussion with the village staff, there was an agreement that either stop signs or yield signs should be installed on South Coat at Nuttall and on Repton at Nuttall to reinforce who has the right of way at those angled three-way intersections. This exhibit happens to show stop signs. I noted that the staff report said yield signs. Both were in the recommendation from the third-party consultant with the village, and it's my understanding the district is happy to comply with either one of those installations. This was all memorialized in a traffic study that we submitted to the village for review, was reviewed by the third-party consultant, and the recommendations with that discussion were accepted. And the last piece, thank you, the last piece of our assessment looked at the movement of early learners to Ames Elementary School. To identify what the pickup and drop-off behavior is for that program, we did observations at Blythe Park Elementary. The maximum number of vehicles that we documented doing pickup and drop-off at a single time at Blythe Park for early learners was 10. That is a much smaller number and can be accommodated within the onsite parking lot that's being added as part of this project. And to allow that staging to happen all onsite, we recommend that parents be directed to enter via the Nuttall access, which provides the maximum amount of staging space, 15 vehicles, based on the available distance there, from the front of the line where pickup and drop-off would happen at the rear, down to a point where it would not obstruct traffic flow on the external streets. One point that I did not mention earlier is having traffic spill back from this parking lot onto the neighborhood streets with the width of the neighborhood streets is such that if there were a queue of vehicles spilling out, it would obstruct simultaneous bidirectional traffic flow. Or if parents were entering from two directions to turn into the parking lot and spilling out onto the streets, it would obstruct traffic flow in its entirety. So we don't see that as being a very safe condition in the event that an emergency vehicle needs to arrive at the school while there are parents performing and pick-up and drop-off. So the early learners is a volume of traffic that we believe it can be achieved within the parking lot without impeding traffic flow and safety on the external street system. The early learners do have buses, and buses are much easier to direct pickup and drop-off than a large quantity of parents. And so we recommend that the early learners use that curbside pickup-drop-off space on South Coat. And that allows the buses, as the parents would at the rear of the school, to have curbside loading, allowing students to step directly in and out from the sidewalk without crossing any space that could be shared with vehicles. And the timing of the early learners program is staggered from the schedule of the remainder of the school so that there will not be peak demands on that curbside space on South Coat at the same time for parents picking up or dropping off for Ames and the early learners buses. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions that you may have for me. And once that's done, I believe we're concluded with our testimony and can open up to general questions.
I had a question for the area of the drop-off area on South Coat. When it's not being used for drop-off, is it going to be usable as parking spaces or is it going to be blocked so that people can't park there?
That's not specified. It could be used as parking, but I would advise the district to make sure that if it's used as parking, that it's done in such a manner that any parked vehicles would be cleared prior to the pickup and drop-off period.
And then why have the early learner bus come to the front of the school and the early learner parents go to the back? Why not just have the bus go to the back too? Because I thought the entryway for the early learners was in the back.
The reason for that is so that we could maximize the amount of stacking space for parent vehicles. It gives a little bit of cushion. Let's say there's a rainy day. There are a lot of people who walk to and from school in this district because they are neighborhood schools, though early learners are district-wide. It gives a little cushion in case at Ames, maybe a few fewer students can walk to and from school. We have that 50% cushion. And then we really do want to maximize that curbside loading so that every vehicle pulls up adjacent to a curb.
And then I just had a comment about the traffic management person. I think that would be an excellent thing for the district to utilize and also at Central and Hauser because I think one of the weaknesses for years has been parents just pulling in and going out and double parking and all the rest, and there aren't staff at the schools that have the authority or want to have the authority to direct parents. And the police can't do it. So I hope the district considers doing that maybe at Central and Hauser as well. I don't know if it's, there's a need for that at Blythe or Hauser. The best be on your project.
Any other questions I can answer?
One question about the parents staging area that you've denoted there. Wasn't that where the fire lane was being marked as well?
That's correct. And so they were parking spaces previously. I can look up the exact period of time that we observed early learner pickup and drop-off activity happening, but it was within the span of approximately 10 minutes or less.
Okay.
Very transient.
That's where your Siamese connections are though, correct?
I'm sorry?
The Siamese connections, they're over...
To the east.
Okay.
There's an existing access drive.
So you've got, you've got the fire lane in the northwest but the Siamese down here? Okay.
Yeah, one more question just about parking. What's the existing parking ratio per classroom? I'm just curious.
36 spaces to...
17 classrooms, that's not an itinerary, so we have 36 and 17 classrooms. 36 spaces, 17. We have 17 classrooms, but we also have itinerary staff as well, and we have 36.
So it's about the same, basically, two to one? Or two spaces per classroom? Is that adequate? Does it seem to be adequate?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
The parking right now is not adequate. We use a few spaces at the church across the street, and we also have some street parking as well. In fact, with the addition of the spaces in the parking lot, it's going to be more adequate than it is today. Thank you.
Other questions for D96?
I had one question. I guess I missed my option before with Mr. Kelly. Regarding the trash dumpster, was there consideration of putting it anywhere else? In particular, I'm wondering about the, off of South Coat, the old driveway to the corner in the front by the school. Would it be possible to put the dumpster there?
We did consider that. Two reasons why we thought that maybe that wasn't a good reason. Primarily, fire access, that is exactly where the Siamese connection is and the lane that the fire truck uses. And we also thought proximity to the playground was maybe not...
Well, I meant on the other side, the other corner, the front corner, where the, yeah, right there.
Oh, it's the primary entrance to the school, so we thought that that would not be the...
Even with an enclosure?
With an enclosure, it would look better. Access, that would be the other issue off of South Coat and probably conflict with pickup and drop-off that would still happen on South Coat. So that was the reason why Loudon kind of operates as the back entrance, if you will.
Okay.
Were I able to address another parking?
Please.
Please.
Although our parking lot can accommodate 36 cars, when school is in session, that parking lot is also used as our playground. So you have only parking in half of it, and I think at the most, we can fit 21 cars because the rest of it is a kickball field.
Right.
So, so when I said that the new parking area is going to accommodate much more, it didn't make sense mathematically as I sat down, but now it makes sense because if half of it is kids playing, 18 to 21 cars on there is not enough. Thank you.
This isn't a zoning question, and maybe it's for Mr. Green. Are the, is the landscaping in the parking lot going to have irrigation? Like I said, it's not a zoning question, I'm just curious.
The landscape, landscape islands?
Yeah.
No.
Other D96 questions? Anybody else in the audience want to make a comment?
See if they want to ask questions of the D96 people. So they have an opportunity to ask questions of the D96 people if they want to.
Right, so you can address us, but you can also ask questions of the petitioners.
My name is Susan Wolf. I'm at 243 Bartram Road. I'm also the Ames PTA president. I have a first and third grader at Ames, two boys. We have also had the unique experience that they were early learners when it was at Hollywood. They were also at Blythe. Now we're at Ames. So we've, with the exception of right here, we've kind of hit the district. So we, I really appreciate the puzzle that the district has had to put together in trying to figure out the space needs. I am in Ames quite a bit. I've been in the other schools. I understand what we need. I have a child that sits in the hallway with an itinerary instead of being in a more private space. So we have really struggled with having the space that the school needs. And so I'm just here in support of the Ames construction progress, project and the requested variances. I also really respect the importance of the village code and why we have all of that, and the importance of being good neighbors. One of mine is sitting on the panel tonight. Hello, Sean. We're not over a fence right now. So I really respect all the thinking that has to go through to make this work for everybody in the village. I do believe that D96 and the team hired has developed, the team hired to develop and execute this expansion plan has made very good faith efforts to meet all of the requirements needed to make this a functioning space within the constraints that we have to address the needs, to continue to be a premier, have a premier public education program for all of our children. I do think the final results, as shown, will be a major improvement. We've been talking about a lot of the outside of the school, so I won't go into what I think the improvements are inside, but on the outside, which is where a lot of these questions live, I don't know if you've been by the school lately. I know some of you are there on a regular basis. It's kind of a mess. We've got people playing in the parking lot. There's chain-link fences, and there's equipment, playground equipment that is old, it's not safe, it's concerning. So what I feel is the exterior and all the efforts made to blend in from... So what I feel is the exterior and all the efforts made to blend in from the current look of the school will result in a much improved property in our village that benefits people that are driving by. The playground will benefit not only the schoolchildren, but all of the neighborhood children that would like to use it on a regular basis. And just the look in general, we're only going up at this point, and I think it's going to look great. Also, the better separation of parking is super important, and I think we've addressed that and have the flow of traffic in a way that's going to be much safer for our students. And I think the traffic flow can, can only be improved. And I think there's been so much thought into how we can make this a better process from someone that walks there as well as drives there and tries to park. I think it will be much better. So I really hope that we are able to move forward with this project. I know it's been in the works for a long time. It's been needed even longer than that. So hopefully, we're at a point now where we can move forward and have this done in a timely manner that doesn't impact learning for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Or if you have questions for me, thank you for all your time dedicated to this project. I know it's been extra meetings, so we really appreciate it.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, that's me. You're good, you're in. My name is Alstair Graham. I live at 360 Uofdale Road. My husband Matt in the back. Graham and I have three kids, two of whom currently are Ames Dolphins, one is in fourth grade, one is in first grade, and we have an early learner who will be attending kindergarten next year. So for years, it's been clear that the current facilities at Ames are inadequate, excuse me, inadequate for what the district strives to do. Most obviously, to provide a top elementary school education to meet the needs of the growing population of the community, but also to simply meet modern educational standards. This expansion would meet both needs. Let me take you back to my first encounter with District 96 in Ames, which occurred when my now-fourth grader was seeking to enter the kindergarten class at his neighborhood school. We had moved to our home to be in a tight-knit community with clear investment in public education and the convenience of living steps away from school. Ames is right around the corner from us, a very short walk. So back then, this is 2015, it wasn't so easy to get our son into his neighborhood school. There simply wasn't enough room to accommodate the entering kindergarten class. So we had to attend several board meetings, and luckily, with the establishment of the flexible boundary system, we were able to attend a neighborhood school, and we're still there, and we are glad we did. You see, despite having that claustrophobically tight space, like where you have to walk through a classroom to get to a makeshift curtain-walled classroom where your kids have to line up, you know, in the parking lot with their backs against the school wall when a car drives through, when only two classes or two grades are allowed to play on the playground at the same time. I mean, it's tight. But our top-notch faculty and staff have done a phenomenal job of making do. That was a tough sell years ago, but it's living on its last breaths now. And that flexible boundary system only works for so many students, as you've heard Mr. Gierman say. So you know the phrase that good work gets rewarded with more work? So that's D-96. A great educational system that attracts more families to be part of that educational system, which puts a strain on the current facilities of that educational system. Page two. For years now, there have been plenty of discussions with Superintendent Ryan Toy and the school board and interest groups and input meetings of the community and school families and the students. There have been consultations and plans with architects and engineers and traffic studies consultants, the fire chief, and other specialists who know what they're doing in this exact type of situation. Together, they've all come with the current plan to best address the community concerns to minimize the disruption of the neighborhood, including the slight zoning variations. The plans are well thought out and responsible, and they're tight. We need to get started and done, and this is an urgent need. So we fully support these expansion plans. They improve an already great school in the top school district and support the educational needs of the Ames family and Riverside as a community. And thank you for listening. Thank you.
All right, next up we have Suzanne Mariff.
Mearhead.
Mearhead.
My name's Suzanne Mearhead. My husband Wesley is also here tonight. We live at 319 Bartram, and we have twins who are in first grade. We actually moved to Riverside for the school district, so we are very highly invested in this project and what it means to our children and to the community. So one of the things that Mr. Gierman said tonight, which was very striking to me, is that our enrollment is up 50% since 2001. I mean, this overcrowding is really felt both by the children and the parents currently. So I can only imagine what it's going to be like a couple of years from now if these changes aren't made to our school. So, for example, we talked a lot about parking tonight and how important these extra parking spaces are. Parking is a mess right now. Drop-off and pick-up is a disaster, and they do a great job managing what we have. So I do want to give them credit for that. It's making the best out of a bad situation. So I typically, when I'm the one who takes our children to school, I have to drive because I'm headed to work. I have to make sure I leave my house at a very specific time every morning because if I get into that drop-off line too late, I may be sitting in that line for 10 minutes. I may be actually knowing the bell is ringing inside, but because that line isn't moving, we can't move. My children can't get out of the car into the street. They have to wait. So they are now entering into the school late. In terms of picking them up, I have seen parents starting to line up up to 15 minutes before the bell rings. And that is because the parking gets so congested around the school that in order to make sure you are in a walking distance that makes sense, you have to get there early to claim a spot. And then, I've even more so noticed parents who are parking in spaces that they shouldn't be parking in. So to your point, there's, it's kind of Wild West out there. But to have more parking spaces dedicated to the teachers and the staff will not only free up some of the parking spaces on the street, but also the situation the teachers are in now. Today, I won't say who, but I saw a teacher booking it because I'm assuming she had to drive around the block to look for a space because she got held up in traffic. Like, it just, it's having this trickle-down effect with everybody. Some of the comments made about what they're doing with flooding, I just want to say how impressive I think it is, the work you're going to do to that. There are times our kids can't play in the green area because it's flooded. Our PTA spends a ton of time and money, well, ton of time raising money for a Gaga ball pit that our kids sometimes can't even play in because it's so wet and muddy in that area. So with all of these changes we're having, I think it's really important to consider that one of the reasons young families are moving to Riverside, it's much like myself, we're moving for the schools. And the fact that our enrollment is booming and we don't have space to put these children is very concerning, and it's only going to continue to impact how parents are relating to our district and the learning opportunities for our children within the school. So, again, approving these variances is so important now because we are on a timeline for this project to make sure the project is done by the time our next school year starts. Right now, it's impacting our children. In fact, we aren't able, from what I've heard, we're going to have to move our school's talent show. The kids can't have, watch the talent show during the day because there is limited exits out of our gym now. It's actually a safety hazard for all the children to be participating in activities. They have participated in the past because of the construction that's going on at the school. So, you know, as a parent, I'm concerned about how continuing to delay this project or make changes or the time added to it, how that's actually going to impact the learning and education opportunities that my children have at their school. So I'm in support of this. I hope we can approve it, and I hope we can get this project started immediately, like tomorrow. Thank you.
Christine Hall? So those of you who were not sworn in yet, can you raise your right hand? Anybody else who wants to give testimony? Yes, it's a public hearing. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Christine Hall.
Thank you.
I live on 528 Salburn Road. I don't have as much to say or as eloquent, but I just wanted to show up and voice my support for the renovations and the variances that, you know, need to move forward so that we can move forward with the renovations. I have a third grader and a first grader at Ames, and I just think that everything that sort of reiterate what everybody else has been saying, that seems very important and really well thought out, and we definitely want to get some more space, not only for Ames, but for future kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else about these? Carrie Zluzi?
Hi, good evening. I'll be quick. Madam Chairwoman and members of the commission, thank you for serving on this commission. This is a very important topic, and I know you've spent a lot of time on it. So I appreciate your deep dive. I live at 347, or 437 Repton. So when I walk out of my house, I look to the left and Ames is right there. This is something, obviously, that impacts me in many ways. We moved here for the schools, like all the other families who have spoke today. I have four kids. And I'll tell you, the school, Ames, has delivered. It does have, by far, some of the best staff and most dedicated teachers that I've ever witnessed, and I'm appreciative for that. However, for the reasons stated, it's not, I think that the efforts of the teachers are thwarted because of things like classrooms with no windows and air, teaching areas that are no bigger than the PTA closet. This is not okay. It's not acceptable for a top-notch school. I can attest to the deliberation of this entire process. We, the purchase, the land was purchased as my oldest was entering into kindergarten. She's now in fourth grade, so ideally, she'd get one year with it. So it took a long time. I've been paying attention to the process since the beginning, and I've tried to stay active. So it has been very well thought out. And I, looking at the plans, I can see there are a lot of limitations because of the type of neighborhood that this is being built on. But it's well thought out, and this is a once-in-a-generation decision, something that will benefit not just the students, not just the people in the neighborhood, but the entire village because of the value of the school and the ability to be an even better school than it is. So thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Anybody else? Mr. Green, if you could come back up. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you this question, for the record. Do we still have the poster with the impervious, impervious? Thanks. That might be, so the angled... No, this is fine. The angled parking spots along the drive aisle off of Nuttall, are those going to be pavers?
Those are not the asphalt, asphalt pavement in that location.
Okay. Part of my question here is, have you maximized all options for pervious surfaces? So why not pavers there?
So, in that location, because the whole thing is paved right now, can't quite see around it. This big, large green space island you see is all asphalt right now. So just by putting that, that green space in there, that island, we're, that's how we're able to reduce that flow by 16%. So we did consider it, but really, the, this whole drive, because, because of the elevation of Nuttall and the elevation of the school, that whole drive is, is really pitched along the whole run. So like I mentioned earlier, you're not going to really get that infiltration because of the steepness of that, of that drive in that particular location. But we felt by adding the, the island, not just the big island, but the other islands around too, that we're able to reduce the flow. So we, we felt comfortable that, especially considering the drastic improvements we've made in the other areas, that it was sufficient.
So there's nowhere else that you can make impervious to pervous? I'm just trying to get this on the record for us and for the board.
We, we could, we could put more pavers, but really, we're, we're not going to get the, the intent isn't going to be met with them. If we do it elsewhere, almost everywhere else, all these areas are sloped relatively steep down to, to where those pavers are. So no matter where we do it, we could, we could, but then we're not going to get the benefit of really infiltrating water over and through those pavers to the full extent. Some will, but not, not to the full extent.
Okay.
Just on that subject, if water falls in that access, whatever you call it, where, how does it flow?
So, which one's it?
Right, like, right where the island is that you're, of course, pointing to.
Okay.
Yeah, that whole area. If water falls on that asphalt surface...
So, in the, in the grass, there's going to be a drain inside the grass. So that, that's how we make sure that we're draining the neighbor's property back into the school. There's going to be a drain, we'll get a rear possibility there. The asphalt, the asphalt will, will sheet drain down to an existing drain that's located just, just off of Nuttall. And we put a small ridge there just to make sure that we're not sheet draining all the water into the street. But we weren't able to get a large ridge because of the steepness from Nuttall up. So we only get a few inches of a ridge to force the water back into a manhole right here.
Did you mention, did you mention the neighbor because water that is in the backyard of that neighbor will actually go into the island?
Yes. So we've, we've located a low area within this green space here that's low enough that that rear area can drain into the school site so that there's no way that the school can drain to Nuttall.
Other questions for anybody?
I got a question on the landscape plans. Did you prepare those as well? So on your landscape plans, you've got clouds and deltas for, it looks like you're adding quantities on tulip trees, a couple of red oaks, a couple of other oaks, some small caliber trees. What do you got here? 10, 20? Looks like 20, but I'm only seeing a couple that are clouded and deltaed out here. Was this done to increase the amount of landscaping in the islands or, what's the, I guess, what's the purpose of the increased landscaping?
I think it was just to screen the property lines a little bit more, just to beef up the landscaping so that we can really make sure that there's a nice, solid, obvious boundary to the school and to block the lights from headlights of cars that might be pointing in that direction.
The clouded areas are also based on the village forester's feedback on species. So they had some different species before, and they're planned, so this reflects some of the trees.
Okay. Yeah, that, I think that was one of my questions, was because the, the quantities reflected over here didn't quite match up with what's being shown on the site here. But I do see an increase in, in the landscaping out here. Okay.
I have a few questions, just to make sure I understand everything. Is all of the chain-link fence on the site is being removed? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Great. So the fence on the west, you said, is, you're extending the neighbor's fence?
Yeah, so the, well, no, we're, we're, the neighbor's fence will remain in place.
Right.
We'll extend a fence from where it stops to the end of the parking lot on...
From here and to here. So we extended, the three other fence stops, probably there.
Okay.
So we'll extend the fence to the end of...
Right. And then, is it the same then on the other, on the Nuttall? That, yes, that property line, is there a fence there?
Yes, there, this fence comes around the corner, and I believe it stops right about there.
And you're extending that?
We are not extending that. Only on the west here.
Okay. So that parking will not be shielded necessarily?
It will not. This is the back of these garages, and there's not a lot of room there, so we're not providing a fence along the property line.
Okay. In the packet, I thought it said that the parking setback on that side was .25 feet. Is that not correct? I mean, but, and you said two feet. I think it says 0.25 is the proposed setback on that property line. So...
Three inches.
Three inches is the... Three inches is the...
District.
Correct, yes. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that is the existing condition from what's supposed to be...
And that's to be continued, okay, I thought, I thought, I heard two feet.
Two feet is further up.
Oh, I see, on that line, okay.
It's about two feet in that area.
Because it would be about two feet here.
Mm-hmm. And there's, there, there's an existing fence, but it's the neighbors'. I'm just wondering, you know, usually, like, when a car parks against a curb, there's like a two-foot overhang of that car, right? So presumably, that car would be overhanging the neighbor's property.
Right, I understand what you're saying. There's enough space here where the car cannot overhang.
Right. And I'm really, I'm more concerned about the .25 than the two feet. I mean, two feet is at least adequate for overhang.
It's like we're at 1.78 feet here and 1.9 feet here, so like two feet, but a little bit of space overhang, so maybe that, that number's incorrect and the finding's a fact.
Okay, so you're saying it's not .25, the setback?
And it was the existing, it was .25.
Okay.
So proposed is definitely 1.8, 1.7, 10.5.
Okay. If we can just make sure that we record that, because it does say the proposed setback is .25. So two feet makes, makes a lot better situation. And so, thanks.
Other questions? Any final comments? Questions?
If I could just note a couple housekeeping items before we move on. Sonya, I can't remember during your presentation, did you talk about the public hearing notice in the publication?
Oh, yes.
We just want to acknowledge for the record that this was published.
This was published in the, I believe, February 9th, February 5th?
February 5th.
February 5th. And the mailings were sent to the property owners.
Right. And in regards to the public hearing notice, someone had raised when it first came out the fact that there is a stray reference to Blythe School in the notice, which is an issue that we looked at. You know, the pins are all Ames, Ames is mentioned in, in other places within the notice, the address is our Ames. We didn't see the, the stray reference to Blythe partway through as, as any kind of issue, so I just wanted to note that for the record. It's not a jurisdictional problem. And then lastly, before we close, if, Madam Chairman, if you could just ask for a motion in a second to mark the district's entire submission as petitioner's exhibit number one?
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it from...
You ask again? All right. So do I have a motion to either continue or close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion for motions? Let me discuss the special use first.
I was going to ask, how would we like to do this? One by one on each variance, or...
You have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you guys can certainly go one by one. You just don't have to. The school district has provided pretty detailed, in their opinion, findings in support of each of their variations, that, you know, you can, in some cases, planning commissions will just kind of accept those, or if you have any issues or concerns about them, you can note, or any additions, you can note them. But, you know, how, how you go about it is up to you. There, there's a lot of variations. If you, if you don't feel the need to go standard by standard, variation by variation, you certainly don't have to. But I do recommend talking about the special use and then the variations.
So the standards for the special use are on page six of the packet. Now, all of them need to be met. If you have any thoughts on the special use before we go through the standards? Commissioner Miller, you had had questions about special uses in schools. Did you have any concerns, comments on that?
Well, my only, my thought was that the school, when it first was built in 1924, I believe, or 1929, it has been there for almost 100 years. The neighborhood grew up around it, so, and it was a permitted use for almost all of that time. Then the zoning code changed, it was made a special use. So that was kind of where I was, where I was coming from when I was asking the, the question regarding the legal standing of special use, because this is not a new school that's being placed, we're not, the petitioner is not someone who's coming in and asking to put a new school into the, into the community, so I just thought that was relevant in considering both the granting of the special use and also the variations.
Yeah, and I, I would agree that those things are all very relevant. You know, it was, at the time, the code made it, they changed it from a permitted to a special use, the code made special provisions that those permitted uses became approved special uses, so it gets to stay there as a, as a legal conforming use at this point. But the reason they're before you today is because they're making that use more intense, they're expanding it, so you're really looking at that aspect of it in, in terms of that, the impacts that that expansion may have.
And in order to expand it, they bought two additional properties.
Yep.
And I think the way they've organized the addition very centered on the back lot, they did not damage the facade of the front of the school, so visually, it's not changing what people see when they drive by. So, I think, you know, and it's also the fact that the petitioner is a, another governmental body, a public entity, this is not a for-profit school, so I think all of those things are relevant considerations.
Other thoughts? All right, let's go through the standards. A, the proposed, proposed use is designated by the zoning ordinance as a special use in the district in which the use is to be located. Tongue twisted there, yes? B, the proposed use will comply with all applicable regulations, geez, in the district in which the use is to be located, with the conditions as laid out.
And provided the variations are approved.
C, the location and size of the proposed use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets given access to it are such that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located. So adding 8,000 square feet, but as you pointed out, it's on the back side, unless you live in Loudon. Right, okay. D, the location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not be unreason, will not unreasonably hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. Or, or developed up, so, all right. E, parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use, properly located and suitably screened from adjoining uses, and the entrance and exit drives will be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances.
Very close.
If the variances are recommended. F, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. Could enhance it. G doesn't apply because there was no denial within the past year. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we recommend a special use.
With the conditions?
With the conditions.
Okay. Who's taking roll call?
Oh, I can do that, okay. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier? Chair First Mateo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And, Sonya, for the record, can you read those conditions?
Oh, yes. So again, the conditions suggested were, one, that the building must comply with Title VI Police Regulations, Chapter VII, radio amplification in certain buildings, to provide adequate radio coverage for public safety agencies within the building and addition. The second is that yield signs be installed at the intersections of Repton and South Coat with Nuttall, as recommended by the village traffic engineer and their memo dated February 5th, 2020. Third is approval of the engineering plans by the village engineer and MWRD, and the fourth is approval of the parkway tree locations by the village forester.
Okay. Variations. Discussion?
This is a very, very tough site, so it's, it's got a lot of challenges to it, you really don't have a back door to hide anything, so like, the, the trash enclosure, obviously, that, no matter where you put it, you're going to be front and center somewhere. Same with the setbacks, where you're really challenged due to the geometry, nothing's at a right angle, so it's, I'm sympathetic to it and I understand.
I feel largely the same way for most of the variations. I will say that I struggle with the impervious. A vast improvement from 64 to 52, but that 52 is just reflective of the permeable pavement, which we requested, and I appreciate, but to, to, I just think that we, as a zoning commission and the village, need to be careful to say that permeable pavers don't count as impervious at all, because, you know, that would lead to, basically, people can pave their entire lot if pervious, pervious, permeable pavers counted 100% as impervious. So, or vice versa. But I just think we want to be careful with that, and maybe we need to address that in the code to make sure that, that it's not recognized fully in the future. So I, I think from the hardship standpoint, the geometry goes, the geometry of the site goes a long way to justify hardship for most of the variations. I'm not sure it does as clearly for the permeable paving.
So I, I think the district has done a really excellent job, I have to say, in the way the building is set on the site, the fact that you came back and you made the changes with the woodshed playground and the concrete basketball court and adding all the, not just permeable pavers, but other ways to increase permeability, the underground, I don't know what the right term for it is, underground water retention area. I, I just think it looks really great, and it also serves the purpose of creating new learning spaces that are really needed in the district. And obviously, you couldn't have done this if you hadn't bought those two additional pieces of property, so that was huge, and it was really nice that they were available and they were purchased by the district, and the district was on top of that. The way I look at the, the variations in the back and even the parking lot issue in the back, is I look at it with the setbacks as, the setbacks are far better than they were before. Right now, in the one corner of the building, the setback is four feet from the, the lot. And then I also look at it as, if you, again, you don't see the addition from the front of the building, you see it from the Loudon side. If you look at it from the Loudon side, if you look at that part of the property, and consider with the setback, which should be there, they have a 21, they would only have to have a 21-foot setback, I think, I mean, beside 20, 20 feet. Instead, they have 33 feet or 39 feet, you know, if you just, if you really had a back lot and a front lot. So that's how I, I consider the backs. So I think the setbacks are, are fine, and in fact, if you had residential houses there and it was a 50-foot wide lot, you'd only have a five-foot setback, or if it's a 100-foot lot, you'd have a 10-foot setback. The size of the building is no greater than what a residential house would be, so. Now, you know, the dumpster was the only thing that really concerned me, so whether it was the optimal location or...
I agree with all of you. The size of the lot, or the shape of the lot, the fact that there are two street yards, it's, that's hard to work with, but that was a pre-existing condition. The code has requirements for parking spaces. There's public safety issues with drop-off and flow of traffic, so they have practical difficulties. I'm not sure there are hardships. The impervious requirement, I think they've gone a long way with meeting our, our ask. I don't know if they can get another 2%. The stormwater storage is going to help dramatically, especially in that area, well, not especially in Riverside, everybody could say that. I, I think they've done all that they can to reduce pervious, impervious surface. Ideally, it would be at 50%, but I don't see where else, I'm staring at their impervious map, I don't know where else they can get another 2% to reduce it.
We were at, what, 70% two months ago?
Yep.
52% now?
Other thoughts? So, most of what we discussed as practical difficulties apply to all the variations, except for perhaps the bulk requirement in impervious surface variation by my reading. Do we want to separate out that one variation and vote on the others, or do you want to do just one vote? One motion?
I'm comfortable doing one motion.
I prefer to separate.
Okay. Let's go through the standards. So we're talking about 10-4-3, the setback, 10-7-3, the dumpster location, 10-9-5, and 10-9-6, parking lot issues, 10-8-4, the drive aisle, 10-8-9, the number of parking spaces, and 10-9-6, the interior islands, I might be repeating that one. So the first standard is concerning practical difficulties and hardships. Because of a particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Do we think that standard has been met?
I think it has been for all of the variations, particularly the irregular or substandard shape or size of the lot and the sort of extraordinary physical condition of the lot, the fact, not just the odd shape of it, but also the fact that it has two, that it's a through lot or a double lot, or whatever the code calls it, the fact that there's an existing, you know, 90-year-old building there, and therefore, there are existing encroachments, but they're not going to change because we're not expecting the building to be destroyed or anything like that. So I think, I think the proposed standard is met. A1.
I agree.
Okay. B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain?
That's true.
Public school. C, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. D, the conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. E, the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the, in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
None of those.
F, the granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And G, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood.
None of those.
None of those.
Okay.
I think that's all met.
Okay.
I think the standards are met.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to pass all of the above variables.
So that's six variations.
To recommend approval.
Right.
Thanks.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, so that leaves us with the variation concerning the maximum building coverage and required maximum impervious surface.
So my concern is simply that I don't, I don't feel like the hardship for this particular, in particular, the pervious surface has been met. Simply that, you know, that is all based on kind of square footage of the site versus square footage of everything that you're trying to put on the site. And it doesn't really go to geometry or any of the other issues, I feel like. So I just don't think that the hardship has been met. I will, I mean, I agree that it's, a great effort has been made to decrease it, but it's, it's still not being met, and I don't, I just don't see the hardship.
Or practical difficulty.
Yeah, so if it's 2% that we're, we're basically at an odds with here, and I suppose the question is a practical 2%. So I'm looking for the square footage of the lots, and I see we're at 1.4 acres plus 1.36 acres.
2.2 acres?
2.2 acres.
So I have approximately 95,32 square feet would be that acreage in the square footage.
So we're talking about 1,900 square feet?
A little over 1,900, yeah.
2,000.
So where, where could we find 2,000 square feet that would actually be effective, I suppose, is the question?
It may be a reduction of some of the areas.
I think the only area that could be reduced is the building itself. I mean, the other areas, the play areas, all are permeable. I don't quite see how the numbers work out there, but it seems like only the parking lot.
You'd be losing parking spaces to make that work.
Right. And if the petitioner is, Mr. Green has, has really done these numbers, I wouldn't be in favor of requiring the petitioner, after everything they've done, to spend money to no purpose. It's really not going to make any difference. They canted all the drainage from, from what he said into the lot, so it's not going off the lot, it's not burdening the sewer system, it's going into the retention areas and all the rest, it's slowing the flow. So I wouldn't be overly picky about 2% of impervious surface myself. I think they've done practically what they can do.
Yeah, I mean, I'd hate to make them lose parking spaces just to arbitrarily put in some, some green space that's not necessarily going to be effective for them. That's my thought.
I mean, like, in the little access drive to the right, you could have them put in pervious concrete, maybe, or pavers, but what, what really, would that really make any difference? Or is it just a matter of, you know, getting to 50%? I know the PCC has approved other projects where we could have required a petitioner to, you know, totally change their driveway, and that has not been done with other petitioners. So I don't know if it's different because this is a large, you know, a tax, taxing body that's in front of us.
I don't think other, I don't recall passing on impervious or, or reduction of pervious recently, have we?
It was the 173 gauge, the, the front porch. That's the only time I think we've discussed it since I've been on the commission.
Okay.
St. Mary.
Oh, and St. Mary too, right.
But they ended up producing.
But they had this tiny percentage that they had to make.
They ended up producing.
Right. But they ended up producing. 62, I think.
You're right, you're right. And they, we did not make them come down to 50%.
What did they come down to existing?
I think they removed some additional existing areas along Harriken, so they brought it down so they would not be increasing it more than what was existing on there.
Okay.
So they maintained the existing percentage.
But none of it was with permeable pavers, or was it?
I think they did one small permeable area.
And it was counted as 100% pervious?
I think so.
Did they place some of their sidewalks, maybe?
I don't think it was.
They didn't do any pavers. I think they ended up removing some walkways into different areas, is what they're discussing.
Yeah.
Obviously, they did any permeable.
Okay. I guess part of my hang-up a little bit is that we're, so much of the pervious surface is being made up of permeable pavers and using it as 100% as opposed to something less than that as well.
As opposed to actual green spaces?
Yes.
But I think where they're doing that is that, right, it's on walkways and parking lot, so there couldn't be green spaces anyway, like grass and dirt.
No. But it kind of goes to the more use than the site really can accommodate. So the whole, the whole point of bulk requirements is to make sure that the site is sized appropriately for the amount of use that's being proposed on it.
Right, well, I think...
And so, if you looked at, so for a typical, let's say, what, what was being proposed previously, which was more paved areas that was not pervious, that's why the impervious was so high. Now they're making it pervious pavement, but we're counting that as 100%. So a good deal of the site is still being paved, albeit with pervious pavement.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys did some calculations on what existing coverage is versus what proposed is?
It's definitely an improvement.
They're saying the existing between the three lots is 64%.
Right.
So between the existing school and parking lot, the house that was on Repton and its driveway and garage, and the same thing on Loudoun, adding all those together, the impervious total is 64%.
Right. Including the school lot and everything that was paved on the school lot. And the school was at 80% previously, if I was just looking at that site. Yeah. So part of it is, again, going back to Jackie's statement, that the school was built in 1924, and they just kind of paved everything. That's because you could then. So, I mean, understanding the, the, there's an improvement being made, and I appreciate that, but we also, we also need to come into current compliance or compliance with current standards.
The way I see it, unfortunately, I don't think they can do anything more on this lot than they've already done, and they can't make more land, so I just don't see the...
They did make more land.
Hmm?
To some extent, they did make more land.
I mean, they can't, they can't, like, blow up their little lot by like 2% so that they get more, you know what I mean? Like, a magnifying kind of thing. So I don't, I don't see, I think they, I guess I would have to say they have a practical difficulty in doing anything more with trying to get down to 50%, and in fact, they've made a huge improvement as compared to what exists now and what would exist if their initial proposal was what they were presenting tonight.
Yeah, by definition, I see it as a hardship that I can't find 2,000 extra square feet to turn into green space.
So if our zoning ordinance requires a certain number of parking spaces, is that a practical difficulty that you can't have more green space, permeable space, because we don't have parking spaces?
Well, I think that's, that's a good, that's a good point. Because that's the way they could reduce it, if we had them take out some parking spaces.
Well, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying a practical difficulty for having 2% extra impervious surface is due to a zoning ordinance requirement.
Regulatory requirement.
Okay. I'm asking hardware.
Oh, well, you guys, you guys have to make that, you have, you have to make the decision, but...
This case law stays...
Right, so you have, you have competing things here. What you're saying is you, they can't make it all work, right? They have to choose one or the other.
Which is why we're recommending the other variations be approved, in part because of conflicting codes.
And I wouldn't necessarily prefer to reduce the number of parking spaces.
Okay, so where are we at?
I, I think that, I don't think a unanimous vote is necessary.
Right.
I think that I've stated my concerns.
Okay. So we're ready for a motion?
Motion to accept the variance.
To recommend approval of that variation.
To recommend approval.
Do we need to go through the individual standards again?
Oh, yes, we do.
Okay. A, because of a particular physical or unusual condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship or practical difficulty to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. There's a split opinion on that one?
I think there would be. I think, I just think that because of the existing building, because the way it is, it is the size it is, and they had to make an addition that it was a certain size, they have done what they could with the, making other areas pervious. And I think perhaps getting to what you're saying, Chairperson, it does say, a particular physical or other unusual condition of the specific property involved is distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I don't know if you could bring that in, the competing regulatory requirements, but it might be relevant, so.
B, the purpose of the variation is not based primarily upon a desire to increase financial gain. The alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. The conditions upon which the petition for variation is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. Well, it would be. Every property, it, bulk requirements and impervious surface applies to all of them.
But that's the, that's not the conditions, it's the conditions of the...
Upon which they're asking, okay.
Yes, in the site and the property.
It's been a long day. And the granting of the variation will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located.
That's true.
I agree. The granting of the variation will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
That's true. So it must be...
The proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, or substantially increase the congestion of the public streets, or increase the danger of fire, or impair natural drainage, or create drainage problems on adjacent properties, or endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. All right, we got a second on the motion, correct?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. That's why I ask. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
There were two bulk requirements, so yes, on the building coverage, but no on the impervious, if that's possible. Ooh, many notes.
Yeah, that'll reflect that somehow.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
The motion passes?
Yes. So we are a recommending body. It'll go to the village board for their vote, their action, probably at the second meeting in March. No?
Yes, the second.
No. Will it turn, will it turn around in time?
Yes, it will.
So that'll be the...
17th, Tuesday, the 17th, next week.
Thursday.
Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, the 19th.
Thursday, the 19th.
One day for you two.
Yeah.
So thank you, everybody, for coming out and coming out and coming out, and we really appreciate your feedback and...
Motion to close the...
Ah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Home saver.